Good to go.
Oh, great. Good evening, everyone. Give a give a wave if you're there. Hello. Good, I see everyone. I'd like to start by acknowledging and recognizing the Songhais of the Squamalt Nations, whose traditional territories we live, we learn, and we do our work. And welcome to everyone that's on the screen. I'm just going to get people to introduce themselves so we can see who's who's there. And because Shelley, I'm looking directly at you, you're at the very top of the screen, I'm going to start with you. And then we'll just have people can introduce themselves and say who they who they're representing if they are.
Oh, great, thanks. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. Dr. Shelley Wilton, Director of Indigenous Education with the Greater Victoria School District. Nice to be with you all tonight.
Thank you. How about Kevin?
Good evening, Kevin Garden. I am the Special Advisor, as you know, for the Minister in service of the district's safety plan, and I'm coming to you from the traditional territory of the Mathque and Sumath First Nation.
Thanks. And Shawna?
I'm Shawna Abbott, President of QP947.
Welcome. And Carolyn, I can see.
Hello, I'm Carolyn Howe. My pronouns are she/her, and I am the President of the Greater Victoria Teachers Association.
Welcome. Sarah?
Hi, Sarah Winkler. I am the Principal of George V and here is the President of the Victoria Principals, Vice Principals Association.
Welcome. And we have some staff on screen. I can see Julie and Marnie. Say hello to who you are.
Julie Lattner, Associate Secretary Treasurer.
Marnie Vistefan-Harwood, I'm the Director of Facilities.
Welcome. And we're just going to go around in this room. Over to you, Tom.
Hi, thank you, Tom Hart, Associate Superintendent.
And good evening, everyone. Deb Whitten, Superintendent.
Katrina Stride, Secretary Treasurer.
Welcome back, everyone. Acting Associate Superintendent Sean Howell.
Thank you. So, welcome back. Hope everybody had a great spring break. I'm Sherri Bell, Official Trustee of Greater Victoria School District. And it's a it's a jam-packed meeting tonight, so we're going to get started. I just want to remind anyone that's online. If you have questions for question period, please submit them around the when the superintendent's report takes place, so that we can have them in advance. The approval of the agenda and the approval of the minutes are passed. A, four, five, and six are blank right now, but I don't expect that's going to happen next month. I'm hoping to have some students here next month celebrating some of their achievements. Under Correspondence B1, some of you may have seen this correspondence because it came out in The Times-Colonist. So this is a a letter from the township of Squamalt asking the Minister to create a task force to look at electoral districts in the Greater Victoria School districts. Many school districts across the province have electoral districts. And so that's what that correspondence is about. I think we'll hear a little bit more about that in upcoming meetings. My report, I just want to thank everyone who I've been meeting with for the last couple of months. During spring break, I thought it would be quiet, but it it was not, which was great. I got to meet with a parent group and a few other people within that time, including the Minister of Education. And I met with Songhais Chief and Counsel, so the the meetings keep going. And I'm really appreciative of people's time because I know it's a busy time of the year for everyone. It's busy around here getting ready for budget, which I'll talk about in a minute. The focus in the board office and definitely with Financial Services, Julie, Katrina and her team have been working really hard through the break to prepare our budget. As people know, it's a really short turnaround time for us in Greater Victoria, so that we're we're looking at budget if if we can add positions or if we've got deficit budget. And what do we do about that deficit budget? So there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that are taking place right now. On Wednesday evening, we're back on screen again. And we will be presenting or Katrina will be presenting the the budget. After that meeting, we have a partner table meeting, which that partner table group met for a full day prior to any announcement from the Ministry about our funding numbers. And I greatly appreciated everything that that group did, particularly the advice that they were giving. Parents, I had a special meeting with parents last week during spring break for it was more of an introduction to to how our budget process works. And I think the people that attended that really got a lot out of it. That's what we heard at the end of the meeting. It was more of a conversation. We had a presentation ready to go and got through it. But it was it was there were a lot of really great questions and we spent a fair bit of time just talking about what what they wanted to learn. And then we have, of course, the the meeting on April 8th, which is finalizing the the budget. I spent three days in trustee meetings in March. Two of them were in Vancouver. One was with Board Chairs, the other one was with Secretary Treasurers and Superintendents along with the Ministry. And then the third one was Vancouver Island Trustees Association, which was being held here in Victoria. And I I got to do a tour of Vic High that day. And I'll tell you, the trustees that were there for the tour were incredibly impressed. And and for me, having spent a fair bit of time in Vic High over the past twenty-five years, it was so impressive to see students guiding us around and seeing how proud they were of their building. Some of these students were in grade nine, so they may not have even been in the old Vic High. But the the older students certainly were, and I oh, we've got something going on here. There. So but they definitely knew what, okay, I don't know if you're seeing it, but we're having some technical there. Good. The the thing that impressed me the most was how they were able to take the old pieces of Victoria High School and incorporate it into the new building. And the the students were able to pick that out. They were so proud of, look at, look at this. This was here from a hundred years ago. And I I think they did an excellent job, and it was a a wonderful way to spend an afternoon showing off our new renovated building to trustees across from across Vancouver Island. As I said, I met with the Minister of Education. Kevin was on that call as as well for a part of it, talking about the safety plan. And then I had about half an hour with the Minister and her staff talking through everything that's happening in Victoria. So that was, it was great to to be able to have a one-on-one. And I have, I've I've said this before, but I'm going to announce this officially now. On April 28th, we have our next board meeting. And that one will be face-to-face in the boardroom. So I'm hoping that everybody can be there face-to-face. If you can't, we 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 can provide technology so that you can be there virtually. And of course, we'll continue with the YouTube channel and having it livestreamed there. And that's about all I have to say right now, so I'm going to move on from my report into board committees. And Katrina, I'm going to pass it over to our Secretary Treasurer to talk about Subcommittee on Policy.
Thank you. Our policy Subcommittee did have a meeting on March 26. And while we were meeting, we took a look at mainly bylaws, some policies. Just looking to the language within those documents as it pertains to the composition of the board. So recognizing that we now have an official trustee until the fall of 2026, that some of the language that are in our bylaws no longer don't reflect that. So they they refer to board chair or committees with multiple trustees. Some of them still refer to Board of Trustees. And also because of the changes in process around the standing committees and where some of the subcommittees and ad hoc committees report to, some of them reported to standing committees, just changing that language so that it makes sense for the next year and a bit. And so in that review of the bylaws, we identified five bylaws that will be temporarily suspended. And then fifteen bylaws that we identified for minor amendments in in language. And so included in the agenda package today are quite a few documents related to this. The bylaws that are suspended are there in their original form. They are marked as suspended. And then the bylaws for amendment, you'll see in the agenda package that the original is there, a version with track changes, and also a clean final version of what it will look like. And so because they're they're bylaws, we bundled them all together in one by one bylaw does require three readings from the official trustee in order for the bylaw to be approved in one meeting. I think the only other thing I would say is that in our review of the bylaws and policies, we certainly found some areas of language that we we probably want to look at. It's some of them haven't been updated in a really long time, so just going to hold space for potential changes to some of the language in both bylaws and policies as we move forward.
Thank you, Katrina. And I I just want to reiterate for those people that are are watching and those people that are online with us that this was a very superficial look at bylaws to just reflect the change in the makeup of the board. And it's temporary. And so one of the things that I'm going to, when this motion is put forward, is the word temporary will be included in there so that people know that, again, it's not a review of all of these bylaws by any stretch. As Katrina says, some of them are are quite dated and and probably do need a really good look. And and, you know, with that that notwithstanding, this is just to reflect the makeup of the board. So the ones that are suspended are ones that I talked about at our first board meeting. So rather than having Ed Policy and Operations Policy planning, we've created a Partners and Rights Holders Table where we will come together and talk about big issues in the district. People can put things on the agenda. Conversations will take place there. We're right in the process of, actually, you probably all got the email from Carolyn to ask if you have dates that we should stay away from because we do want to schedule those monthly. And and we will be scheduling them hopefully by the end of the week for the next few months. So that's why those ones were suspended. The other, again, bylaws are, it's just the makeup of the board. And I know people, if they had a chance to look through them, probably went, what is this? Because some are really old and need to be looked at, but that's the only thing we touched. So I'm just, I'm going to put the first motion out and then I'm going to, as we would always do before the motion is moved forward, I'll give people an opportunity if they have things that they would like to add or or say. But the first recommended motion, and this is going to be amended, and I want to read to you the amendment. The official trustee of School District 61, Greater Victoria agrees to have all three readings of the, and I'm adding the word temporary, temporarily suspended, temporary suspension and revision of board bylaws specific to the change in composition of the Board of Education at March 31st, 2025 board meeting. So I, before we move that, I'm going to see if there's any questions or comments. Carolyn?
Thank you. I have four comments, if I may.
Sure.
And the first one I would like to make is that it was very challenging. This was a very dense agenda in all regards, and particularly this motion. So it was very challenging to get this around 6:00 PM on Friday to actually give it the thoughtfulness that it deserved. So that was hard. Let's comment one. And comment two is that I just think it's important for us to acknowledge that it's more than just grammatical changes from a board of trustees to a single official trustee. It's, there are so many of these suspensions and revisions that reflect the reality that we don't have democratically elected trustees anymore. We have a single appointed decision maker. So in, for example, when I look through them, I know we no longer have a group of people to hear an appeal and to make the debate the merits of apparent appeal, but we just have a single person. And we no longer have a majority of trustees to decide on the consideration of policy proposal, but we have a single voice. And I think that the seriousness of that just deserves a moment of attention and recognition, and it shouldn't go unremarked. And I think I acknowledge that this is a lot of work that was been done and by the by your your policy committee, but I wanted to really note that it's more than grammar. It's a significant change to the way that our district operates. I had two more things, my comments. The end of the committees, the ad hoc committees and the standing committees are really serious issues for the GBTA. Those were places where we used to bring and discuss and hear work being done. And the Partner Consultation Table isn't the same thing because it doesn't have the same mechanisms for decision-making that those places did. So I mean, we're we're interested to see how that unfolds, but the ending of those committees is significant for teachers in our district. And then the
Yeah, sorry, Carolyn, can I just add, the ad hoc committees haven't changed at all. It's just the standing committees where motions are brought to court.
Thank you. Thank Ed Policy and and Ops are the ones that have changed, and that matters to us. Thank you, though, for that correction. And then the final, final issue for the GBTA, I think, is that I, in the revisions, I note the ending of the need to spread the reading of policy or over two separate meetings. So we'll have three readings in a single meeting. And to me, that I just feel that like indicates that that it's a formality. I feel like spreading things out over meetings allows people to reflect and bring back feedback and have a week or have some time to, for for the trustee to hear input. And so shortening that time, again, that seems to sort of impact the ability to engage authentically in a way that I'm not certain is is why the why that decision was made. So those are some significant concerns from the GBTA. And with that, I'm going to say thank you for hearing our concerns, and I will say good night to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn. Anyone else? Okay. I will, I've read the motion and the three regarding the temporary suspension and the three readings. That motion is passed. And the recommended motion below it, that the following are suspended board bylaws and the following are revised board bylaws, again, to and and taking what Carolyn said to heart, it's, I know it's a lot. And we actually didn't have to do this. It could have stayed the same as what it was, but it didn't feel genuine to have bylaws that talk about a group of trustees and responsibilities when there is only one. So that's why those changes were made. And the motion that the the following are suspended or revised is passed. Now, again, this doesn't mean to say we're not going to take a look at some of those bylaws because I don't know about people out there, but as soon as you start looking at something, it's like doing a renovation. You start with something and you keep finding things. And so I can see taking a very good look with a proper consultation process to actually do a thorough revision of some of those of those bylaws. Okay, we're going to move to District Leadership Team reports. And I will pass it over to Superintendent Deb Whitten.
Thank you very much. On page 158, you'll see my learning report for the month of March. You'll see hopefully lots of exciting activities that occurred throughout that month. And as I always do like to provide gratitude to this. I really do want to echo official trustees' comments on the work that the Financial Services Team has done throughout a very quick timeframe, but a lot of deep work around the budget for 2025, 2026. So just gratitude to the team there that has pulled forward this upcoming budget. And congratulations to all of the students and staff who participated in these wonderful learning opportunities and athletic opportunities throughout the the year, really, culminating maybe in March, but certainly have taken a lot of time and energy to get us to this point.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I I really appreciate this report, especially when you look at it online and you can click in and take a look at what the articles were about. The one that had me researching and looking at, I was actually not from your report. It was because it was in The Times-Colonist, was the Central Middle School. The the boat that was to sail to Japan eventually, I think it was going to Australia first and then Japan. But it just, yeah, it it's always so exciting to see what our students with the support of our amazing staff are are doing. And when I, when I looked at this and and then looked at the agenda, I I remember years ago that we had opportunity to celebrate success in the district. And I I would really like to bring that back into the board meetings under District Presentations, and it might be celebrating financial services and what they're doing in the next very short timeframe, or students that, you know, won a basketball, one of the provincial basketball championships or creative teachers that have been working with their students to put on something special at their school. So I I it just made me think when I read this that I'd I'd really like to see that happen because there are amazing things happening in our school district. So thank you. We're going to move on to the next agenda item, which has been a a long time coming. And thank you so much, Dr. Garden, for being here tonight. And I'm going to pass this over to Superintendent and Dr. Garden for an update on where we are with the safety plan. And then we'll see if people have questions. I know I have a few, so we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you very much. The safety plan and the pack-up is on page 160. And I do want to take just a few moments just to articulate the process of how we arrived here. So February 25th, we sent out an invitation to rights holders and stakeholders and educational leaders as well as partners, police chiefs from Victoria, Sanit, Genope, as well as the RCMP to come to a meeting on March 10th to provide feedback to the draft safety plan. And the 3rd of March, we sent that same group, the draft, so that they had a week to look it over and provide feedback. And in that time, we did receive feedback, which we incorporated into the next iteration of the draft. On March 10th, we went with the same group through the draft, so page by page, and took feedback at that meeting. Again, incorporating what we could into that draft. And where we couldn't incorporate it live, we took it away and added into that. Similarly, moving forward, again, recognizing it is a living document, so we're always looking to make improvement to it and and make sure that we've heard from people on their thoughts. And we also met on March 12th with, or with on March 12th with VC PAC members, and they provided feedback. So again, similar process was pulling that feedback into another iteration of a draft where we had a revised plan that we felt we had landed with, had heard feedback and up until March 25th, where it was incorporated into the pack-up, which you have. So the safety plan as of March 31st is in the pack-up. We didn't receive any further feedback, and so we felt that we were at our version and vision of of what we have, which is included in the pack-up for tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Garden, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, ju-just a, just a couple of things. You know, I mean, this is the subject, as we know, of an expectation held by the Minister that this has to be submitted and is the subject of three distinct ministerial orders that really speak to the development of a of a safety plan that is first around proactive crime prevention, crisis response, informed, sorry, trauma-informed practice. And and I, and I'll say most importantly, one that is co-constructed. One that is developed with community, with rights holders, stakeholders. And and so having been witness to this, and as I I've said to members of the of the of the of the working table, part of my responsibility, the Minister appointing me, is to is to assist, and I see my assisting in two areas. One is to lend some background around a process and to provide some guidance and feedback on that, I'll say, the technical aspects and components of the program. But the other one is to be a witness and and a truth teller, a person who listens, observes, and reports to the Minister. And so I I do want to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Whitten and and team for, I'll say, the manner in which this was done. The the openness, the respectfulness, the way to create safety around doing this plan, the 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 manner in which all the feedback that I witnessed being offered was given serious consideration. And attempts were made, unless it contradicted the actual intent of the work to incorporate it into into the plan. So I I also appreciate the fact that this is a living document. And and while, you know, a recommendation is coming forward around approval at this point because the the Minister wants to be able to see it and provide some feedback, it is a living document, and and things are going to change between now and the next month, that if the parties remain connected and and true to the spirit of of what has been created, you will make changes as as needed, and I'm sure the Minister will have no problem with that. So I will just say that in addition to the to the content, which in my view fulfills the requirement expected of the of the Minister, the process embraces and respects the intention of the Minister in in producing this document that is before you.
Thank, thank you so much. And thank you so much for your leadership on this, Kevin. I've got a hand up, Shawna. No, oh, it, your hand is up, but you're just waving, maybe. Okay, thanks. I have a few questions in just reviewing the document. On, this is page three, it says, Safety Plan Roles and Responsibilities Ensuring Board Governance Facilitates for Police to Attend Schools. And it goes on a little bit further. Can you tell me what that means? Either either person, ensuring board governance facilitates. So what does that look like?
I can start. Okay. Okay, so through board governance, I can start, okay. Okay, uh so through board governance, um. The supportive of proactive safety, crime prevention and uh crisis response. We would be working with police and the alignment with board policies, board bylaws and regulations would support that mechanism. So it is working in alignment with what the board governance and board does in their purview that supports that work. So mostly the, um, supporting documents that align with this safety plan.
Good, that's, that's sort of what I thought. Thank you. Um, and. It also says um providing oversight in the annual safety plan review process. Is it too early to ask what that might look like? Because I've been trying to picture what it would look like.
It, you know, it, it, it might be a little, a little too early, but I, I think that, that's one of the things that's embedded in the document is a commitment. To review. Uh, I, I certainly think, you know, given some of the expectations of the minister. And I think some of the concerns that uh rights holders and stakeholders have had in your community and, and. And I'll say not just in your community around how uh school districts work with police. I think it is important to be thoughtful, culturally sensitive and um. Um, I'll say intentional in developing that, but I think. The important part here is, is, is that, you know, I'll say two things about this. One is, and this came up at the meeting. There, there are lots of sources of data already that the district has. To, that you can bring to bear to have an understanding about student sense of, of safety and wellbeing. And the other uh piece I would offer is that I think the table. Can guide that process to some degree around providing feedback around some of the things that. Some of the factors that might be considered. I, I'd be careful to say that the table is not going to design the, the process, but I think. Provide a frame around some things that I think the superintendent and team might consider, I think is really important. I think some of those principles are embedded in the document as it reads.
Okay, good, thank you. So would the, would the actual frame or what it would look like, would that be part of? The next step, which is the implementation plan?
Yes, that's the, that's the other part because uh, uh, as the. I, I, I haven't sure, I haven't mentioned it, but, but my, my involvement uh as special advisor goes until the end of June. And uh the first part of it is to assist with, with this plan and the other part is to develop. And support the uh, the implementation plan, which again superintendent and, and, and team. Uh, will be doing and part of my, my task will be to continue to support as much as possible. In, in, in the, in the, the development of that plan. And so I think as that. Part rolls out, connected to the key objectives that are in the safety plan. I think it will become clearer as to what that implementation will look like. And I, and I'll, I'll, I'll give you an example. I mean, we know, for instance, that. The various police services are in different places in terms of their level of readiness to move ahead. So I think an implementation plan would keep, keep that as a consideration and by extension, how you evaluate. That might be differential because uh, you know, uh, for example, if, if, if VPD is. Is, is not as um, uh, ready to, to roll out as, as say West Shore. Uh, then I think that should be reflected in the implementation plan around some of the activities that, that are going to go on in, in, in your schools. And so that's the. That's the task that needs to be mapped out because I think the minister is, is very alive to. How this will go forward and how. The, uh, staff will report to the board around uh some of the key metrics associated with, with, with the safety plan.
Thank you. And um, do you, uh, um. Superintendent and, and Dr. Gordon, um, do you have a, I, an idea of how long it'll take to create the implementation plan?
Um, I, I think that we will, you know, very quickly continue to work on that plan. I think that. What we want to make sure is it is reflecting of the voices of the recipients of the service, but it's also. Scaffolded across the next three months so that by September, we'll have it uh fully implemented. But that it's not sort of a, a hard stop, a hard stop. Um, and I think, you know, some of the elements of the safety plan are already in place, some of them need to be brought forward. We need to have the appropriate meetings and conversations. So again, people are feeling safe, they're feeling comfortable and they're feeling good with how it's moving forward. So there are a lot of work to do in the next three months, but I feel very confident um that we can. We can do that and I would, I would think within the next two, you'll see a lot of um things moving forward.
Great, thank you. Any other questions before I get to the motion? Dr. Gordon, any comments or closing remarks from you?
Just a thank you again to uh the team and community and, and uh for pulling it uh together. I mean, we talked about. Uh, doing this work in the service of children and, and doing it optimistically and with good hearts and. And I think we're just in a good place uh based on the last meeting to uh, to uh realize that aspiration. So I want to say thank you to everyone for uh. For that work.
Right. Thank you, I echo that. Thanks. Um, the motion reads. That the official trustee of school district sixty-one greater Victoria approves the safety plan for submission to the Minister of Education and Childcare. And that motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, you can stay if you'd like, Kevin, or I'm.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll sign off. But thank you for the, thank you for the invitation, I appreciate it.
I'm glad you could be here. Take care.
No, have a good night.
All right, um, we're going to E two next, which is the secretary treasures report and there's um. There's a lot there, there's a lot happening there.
Thank you. Uh, yes, um, we did receive confirmation of our capital funding for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, we received a letter from the ministry on March twenty-fifth and that letter is included in the agenda package. And these are all projects that were um supported by the board and requested in June twenty twenty-four. So this is the ministry telling us which one of, which projects that we submitted were approved. So for major capital, uh, no new projects are being supported. And, but there is ongoing, ongoing support for seismic mitigation at Sundance Bank. And so we're now at the phase where they're requesting a, a final business case. And uh as per, as for minor capital, we have uh two projects under the school enhancement program. The first one is South Park and that is the third phase of the roofing upgrade. They have a beautiful slate. Roof that's being replaced. Uh, Marigold is an electrical upgrade. Uh, there's a one or two carbon neutral capital program uh approvals. One at Oakland's for boilers and one at Mount Doug for DDC upgrade. And uh then also food infrastructure program. So in the letter, it references uh Lansdowne. Um, but it's actually for various sites, so we have to just put one school. So it's actually for Craig Flower, uh Willows, Torque. Lansdowne South and uh Toney as a distribution uh area. So these are kitchen upgrades and that includes uh installation of appliances and also cabinetry for, for storage. And then the last minor capital that was approved was a, a playground. Um, through the playground enhancement program and that's a universally accessible playground at Hillcrest Elementary. So those will be um moving forward with, with those. I just put a note in the agenda that we uh still have the annual facility grant for the AFG. For twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, that will be coming forward at the April twenty-eighth. Board meeting of that has to be submitted to the ministry by May sixteenth. And then we'll be starting the process uh all over again and uh we'll be looking at the draft uh five-year capital plan. For twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven and that draft will be coming to the board also on April twenty-eighth. Um, that will be just for information at that meeting and for feedback. And then we'll be bringing the final submission to the May twenty-sixth board meeting. And in plenty of time for us to submit for the June thirtieth deadline. So because this is a, a bylaw, um, and we actually need the bylaw to um. Access funding from the ministry does require three readings. So there's a motion there to. Um, agree to do three readings at this meeting tonight. Uh, you'll also see included in the agenda package, uh one-page bylaw. This is the, actually the official bylaw. Uh, is being approved that will be signed and submitted to the ministry. However, the school act allows us to create a summarized version uh for the official trustee to, to read. Through and that's been included and showing on the uh agenda package.
Great, thank you. Uh, before I go to the motion, any comments, questions? Looking at the screen. Okay. Uh, I'm going to the motion that reads the official trustee of school district sixty-one greater Victoria agrees to give all three readings. Of the school district uh sixty-one greater Victoria capital bylaw number uh twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. CPSD sixty-one slash uh hyphen zero one at the March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Board meeting and that motion is carried. Um, I'm going to read a shortened version of the next piece of this. So this, this is looking at the five-year uh capital uh plan, so. The five-year capital plan is approved by the minister to include the supported capital projects that we've. Um, gone over specified in the letter addressed to the secretary treasurer um and dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm going to give it um a, a first time, second time and third time reading. And pass it on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five and the secretary, secretary treasurer and the official trustee. Be authorized to sign and seal and execute this bylaw on behalf of the board so that we can do. This amazing work that's on the list that you've already seen and that motion is carried. Thank you. And you keep going, secretary treasurer, to E two B.
Local capital. And so um this. Section is related to the Cedar Hill seismic project, which is uh well underway. Um, this project was announced in July twenty twenty-one. The ministry is funding forty-two point nine million of the project costs. And the school district is required to contribute a three point six million towards the project. So the motion that's in the agenda today is to approve using a three point six million of local capital. For the district contribution for this project. Uh, there is sufficient balance in local capital due to the sale of land at Lansdowne North to CSF.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, that I'll read the motion that the official trustee of school district sixty-one greater Victoria approves the allocation. Of three million, six hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the local capital reserve. For the district contribution to Cedar Hill Middle School Seismic Capital Project. Uh, set out by the Ministry of Education and Childcare and. That motion is carried and I just want to say, I drive past Cedar Hill all the time. So it's, it's incredible that if you miss a week, what's happened? So I'm pretty excited about um. Being part of that school opening and, you know, it's called a seismic project upgrade, but it's, it's a whole new school. So that's uh, that's wonderful. And we will continue with secretary treasurer.
So next on the agenda is the monthly financial report for February twenty twenty-five. Uh, we'll just note that the numbers in the report from February twenty twenty-four were run prior to month end. Just due to the timing of the meeting. Um, that year, uh, they do reflect what was reported out at the ops committee last year. The uh February twenty twenty-five numbers were run after month end this year. So the budget in this report is the uh amended or final budget and any changes that may have occurred since then. And the actuals are from uh July, July one to the end of February. So if you take a look on page one eighty-seven, which is uh actually the revenues. And there's a column that has percentages. The, this represents the amount of revenue that's budgeted but not yet received. So our current year percentage total is thirty-six percent and that's compared to thirty-seven percent last year, so very close. And then if we are looking at expenses, the total expenses on page one nineteen. And the percentage column for expenses is the amount of expense budget that is still available to spend. Current year, we're at forty percent and the prior year, we were at forty-one percent, so also very close. Not sure if you have any questions?
Uh, I just have one uh question. If you could go to the very first uh page of the monthly financial report. Um, and the very first line has CEHL, other fees. And it shows a minus thirty-three percent. Uh, can you talk about that a little bit?
Uh, so um, this is a good thing when we're talking about revenue. So if you look at, under the budget column, it shows that the budget for this revenue was uh two hundred. And then our year-to-date is two sixty-five. So it's actually saying we've collected sixty-five. Dollars uh more revenue than what we budgeted. So it shows us a, as a negative because there's. We've uh actually collected more than what we uh had expected. So we're not anticipating anymore.
So it's, it's, it's in the red, but it should be like in the green. That should be green, not red. Um, and why is that? Uh, wha- what was the difference between? Um, this year and last year, like what, what contributed to that? Do you know?
Hmm, I don't have an answer to that question, but it is. Often what we'll do is we'll base the current year budget on the prior year or they have. An estimate and so um, a budget is our best guess and so sometimes we end up collecting more revenue than we expected. Um, if Julie has a better answer than that, she's welcome to chime in. No.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any questions from the group? Okay. Budget change report.
Yeah, so included in the agenda package is the budget change report uh for February twenty twenty-five. And uh we didn't have this report in January as we were busy working on um the final budget and the final budget was presented in that meeting. So the last time this report was presented was in December for November. Um, we have made some minor adjustments to this report. If you look back at the report in um December, you will see that it had. The annual budget, so the preliminary budget at the top and then a whole bunch of changes over time. Until the final budget. And so what we're doing now, since the final budget has been approved. Is we've just adjusted the format um so that it shows the amended annual budget at the top. And so now you'll just see any changes after that point. So the operating fund, if you want to look on page one ninety-one, there's one change. Subsequent to when the budget was approved, the final budget was approved. And those are miscellaneous donations and revenues, um, so twenty-eight thousand. And then um, the next page is special purpose, but there's uh no new revenue since the final budget was approved. And then the last page, page one ninety-three is the capital fund. And this one shows you the uh interest income that's been earned on our local capital. And Ministry of Education um restricted. And so we've seen an increase uh since our last report, uh local capital has gone up by about fifteen thousand. And the interest in the Ministry of Education restricted has gone up by eighty-seven thousand. Um, mainly, the increase is mainly due to us receiving the proceeds on the sale of land uh to CSF. So you'll see. Larger um interests being earned in those accounts.
Thank you. Any questions on the budget change? Any questions on the budget change? Uh the budget update, which is E uh this, I I think I went over in my. I s- I s- took this one on my report and I. Is there anything else you want to add to? It it just shows the meetings that have taken place so far and the ones coming up. And in particular, uh Wednesday evening, which is when um the budget will come forward for next year.
Probably the only thing I would add that we've included um that wasn't there before was uh the. Budget Development Process Feedback Survey that we'll be doing after the budget is approved. Um so we're gonna run that just to just around the process itself and. Get some feedback on on how that worked. Um it'll help to inform our process for next year. And we'll be presenting the results of the survey at the April twenty-eighth board meeting.
Moving on to F, the quarterly facilities, operations and capital projects update.
Hi, um a few updates. So we're still getting um lots of window breaks and lots of graffiti that's costing um some money within the district. Uh Northridge Inclusive Project is completed and the team's working on three other projects in various schools for student moves for September. Um foods program spending for this year, we've got one project, we're just finishing up painting touch-ups and then we're done. And then we're gonna start working on the hundred and nine thousand dollars for Lansdowne South, which is for various schools for next year to complete it by March. And then the Sunday Sundance Portable Move, we're hoping to move it over spring break. That didn't happen. Um we're still working with the City of Victoria on the civil submission. So it's all submitted now. Um and we're hoping we'll hear from them and we're hoping to move it on the May pro D day. That's our next target date for moving that one. Um we received the building permit for Glanford Childcare, so site prep's underway. Um for the busing, we've got about two hundred students registered for busing. So we're. We're looking through those applications and um I'm trying to get everybody on a bus. And then networks and communication, this is the first year we did this. We reached out to all the schools. And asked them to look at um who had FOB access to the schools. And we worked with the the different various schools and we were able to put six hundred and seventy-eight FOBs in pending status. Meaning six hundred and seventy-eight people. Um I don't want to say shouldn't have had had access, but no longer have access until we we know for sure they need that from the principals and vice principals. Um and then for Cedar Hill, like you said um before, it's still progressing nicely. We've got the metal cladding going up on up on the outside. Um inside, they're doing the priming, the first coat of primer and the first coat of paint, which is nice. Flooring's going down and millwork is starting to be installed, so it's starting to actually look like a school now. And then the very last part is lead water results. Every year we have to submit our lead water results to the ministry. So we test a third of every enrolling school district site and we have to report that up to minute the ministry. I did note that. Um it's not gonna help anybody to understand it because ministry asset just has a number. So. When we post to the district sites, I'll make sure that it gets the actual school name, so people know what that is. Um other than that, we've we've passed all of it and these filters are on all our drinking sources. And I should also note that all of our enrolling schools are actually have something called a judo filter. So we actually flush the actual main is what was explained to me. So we can set it so it flushes. The main and it usually flushes all the school, all the schools' main before the start of school. And some of them flush periodically throughout the school as well to help with that. Any questions?
Thank you. Um yeah, when I got to the water flushing part of this. I um thought, okay, well, I I guess I have to read this. It's in the package. And it was so dense. Uh but I ca- uh Katrina filled me in with what it actually is and and the fact that we do, uh we. We are bound to post it. Is that correct? Um Marnie? Yeah, and post it with school names. Is that right?
Yeah, it would make more sense if you posted it with school names.
Okay, and um and it doesn't look like there's anything that came out of this that was. Um it's it's great to see that, I mean, these this uh project is. In the ten years I was gone, there were no filters. Um and now there are. So it's it's. But this is a a pretty detailed report and and a ministry requirement for all school districts. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else with any questions? Uh I do have one about Cedar Hill. So the where we are right now, it looks like everything's ready to. Um open in September.
We are on track to open. Um there is some concerns with the civil right now. Um just with the off-site work. So we're seeing how fast we can get the off-site work mobilized. And if it will be part of the actual occupancy permit. Um so but right now, everything's pointing to the kids will be in the seats in September.
And what um are there things besides the uh one you've already identified? Are there other things that could? Um. Make it problematic to have students back in the school in September? Or are we pretty solid with? All of the contracts that we have?
Yeah, we're we're solid with all the contractors on site. I mean, there's little things that pop up every single day. So um nothing majors come up. So if something does come up major, we'll let Katrina know right away. So everybody, everybody can know. But right now, we're we've booked the movers and we're ready to move. So yeah, no, it's it's gonna be great.
Great, thank you. Any questions from anyone else? Oh, okay. Um thank you, Marnie. Um there's been no questions submitted for question period. Um public disclosure of in-camera items are in your package as per section seventy-two. Um and there's no new business or notice of of motion. So with that, um I would like to. Uh pass a motion to adjourn our board meeting and look forward to seeing people in person. Um next month and hopefully we'll see um a lot of faces on the screen and people that are are tuning in on YouTube. At our um upcoming uh budget meeting. So have a wonderful rest of your evening and thank you for being here. Take care.